Welcome to the November seventeenth. School Board Meeting. A little spiel they have to read. We welcome everyone to attend the Twin Valley School District Board Meeting in person for Policy 006. If you are a district resident and or taxpayer and wish to comment during the public comment section of the meeting, please complete a card and follow the procedures as displayed. Public comment is not a question and answer period directed to the board, but a time for the public to submit comments to the board. This this public meeting is being livestreamed for any public members wishing to view or listen. And now let's call the meeting to order and we'll begin with pleasure. Roll call, please.
Alex and both.
Here.
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 Deborah Wallace.
Here.
How are you doing?
Here.
Hi, Howard.
Here.
Day Oliver.
Here.
Tracy Phillips.
Here.
I'll answer.
Here.
Nine more questions.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to item three, which is the approval of the proposed agenda. Yes, for a motion and second please. So move, Bertie.
Second, Phillips.
Are there any questions on the agenda? Or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, this can be approved by a voice vote. All in favor of approving the proposed agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, well now we'll move on to the minutes of the October meetings. First motion being requested is for the approval of the minutes of October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Motion as such. So move, Bertie.
Second.
Any comments on the minutes? Corrections? Missions? Not hearing any. This also could be by by voice votes, all in favor of approving the minutes of October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, signify by saying aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to the minutes of the regular board meeting, October twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. The same thing, we need a motion and second. So move, Bertie.
Second, Oliver.
There would be. We have a motion and a second, any comments, corrections, or additions to the minutes? Of October twentieth. Hearing none, again a voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? We have no requests to speak this evening, so there's no public comment. Now we move on to the fun part of the meeting. And we have our presentations, and I believe Mr. Barber. Your group is first.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity for us to come in and talk about the seventh grade cookie bake. As you know, it's a it's a big event at the middle school. I think this was the twenty-fifth year, and it's something that, you know, we really take private and do well with and really get everybody involved. It's a huge community event. We get a lot of people from outside the school to come in and help. It's really a great event, and some of you have been down there, it's awesome. We really appreciate the board's flexibility and allow us to have the early dismissal that day. Without that, it would it would definitely be a little bit more difficult using the ovens and things in the kitchen. It just makes everything easy and makes the day go really well with all the activities going on. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Walczynski, Grayson, and Ethan to talk a little bit more about the cookie bake, the history, and kind of work alone at that.
You're in the PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Okay.
Give me a broken clicker. There are names pointed over here. One guy there. Should I just stand over here? I can stand anywhere you want. I can press the slidesword. So go down. Down? Yes. I'm just gonna stand right there. Oh, my gosh. That is the wrong way. All right, so first of all, thank you for giving us an opportunity to talk tonight. Cookie bake started in two thousand and one with Mrs. Lisa Thiree, who at the time was a seventh grade math teacher. She did finish her career at Honeybrook Elementary. And it was something she started just with her group of math students. It was a very small group. That they baked some cookies, they shipped them off, and then over the years, she kind of grew it. And I was teaching sixth grade at the time, so I was just kind of a casual observer of what was going on. And I heard about it, and I was like, oh, that sounds kind of cool. And eventually, back in those days, we were teens, so eventually her team became part of the cookie bake. And then, however many years ago, I moved into seventh grade and I was teaching science, and all I knew about cookie bake was I had to do an activity in my science classroom that day. So we got cookies, shocking. We had toothpicks and we mined for chocolate chips. And I don't know what the educational value was looking back upon that, but we had a heck of a lot of fun mining for for chocolate chips. And then about ten or so years ago, I moved into teaching math, and I realized there's a whole lot more to cookie bake than mining for chocolate chips. It is certainly a labor of love that our math team puts together. Certainly, I do not take credit for it. Mrs. Gina Sheehan, Laura Shadow, Jenna Moyer, and Gretchen Bonte are all a huge part of the organization and planning. And then the rest of our seventh grade team, our administration, works really hard to help us get things up and running. The nice thing is, it's kind of a well-oiled machine these days. We have a division of labor, everybody knows what they're doing. I handle parent volunteers and all of the fun that goes with parents. Yes, I can do it, no, I can't do it. Well, now I can do it, but no, I can't do it anymore. Sometimes we get some late requests of people that jump in and say, hey, I'd really love to be involved. And we try to accommodate everybody as best we can. Over the years, over twenty-five years, we baked a lot of cookies. I truly don't know, hundred thousand, if it's that, but you remember the old McDonald's signs that would say millions and millions, or? We baked a lot of cookies over the years. We probably average about eight thousand cookies a year. This week, this year, we were about seven thousand. It's probably the smallest group of kids that we've had, about two hundred and nine kids. In our heyday, when we had more kids and we were a well-oiled machine, we, our best year was over twelve thousand cookies. Now that we got worse at it, but we have less kids, there's actually less ovens too in the cafeteria down there than there used to be. We partnered with an organization called Keystone Military Families. They're an amazing organization, they're based out of Eastport. They assist current and former military members and their families through a whole bunch of outreach programs. The day I dropped off the cookies, it was the Saturday morning after the event. I got there right when they were opening the food bank, the parking lot was packed. It's such an upbeat organization. The lady that runs it, her name is Kyle Lord, she is just an amazing human being. And I follow them on Facebook and see all the different things and events they do. But they're always so excited to get our cookies. And and I always wondered, like, is this, like, do they do this as a favor for us? Or is this something that people really enjoy? And the the truth is, they actually get requests for our cookies every year. To the point where there's somebody who has spent many years in the military, a career military person, spent most of his time in Saudi Arabia. And he actually has created a plaque for us, and she was unable to come in to present it to us the day of the event, so we're going to set up something for her to come and present it to us. She is so blown away by this that somebody who doesn't know where Twin Valley is in reality has gone to the effort. He requests our cookies every year, and now he's created something that has a way to kind of thank our kids over the years. And and I say kids over the years, because obviously, over the last twenty-five years, they're not kids anymore. Kyle, I don't know if you did cookie bake back then or not.
I think I missed it by a little.
You might have missed it. Nick, you had to do it, right? Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, it's one of those things that they actually get requests. This year, I think we did about, I forget, twenty-six care packages that they shipped out. One of the questions I always had was, what do these things look like when they get to their destinations? I finally got an answer. So our security guard has, his son is stationed in Kuwait, so he shipped the box there, and it already reached its destination. Not a single cookie was broken. So I told our packaging group, who they are amazing, they do it every year for us, how amazing they do, because imagine all that that box went through to get from here to Kuwait. And he put a message out to his fellow military members over there that, hey, I just got a box of homemade cookies from my dad's school. And literally within minutes, they were gone. Okay, and so he's going to send us some pictures of what they did over there. So Keystone Military Families, a wonderful organization that we we partner with throughout this process. All right, see if I can advance this slide. If you want to advance the slide, I'll let you. All right, I'm going to turn this over a little bit to to our students.
So in our math classes this year, we calculated how much of each ingredient we would need to bake all of the one hundred and fifteen batches of cookies that we ended up needing. So after we finished calculating all of those, we turned that information over to our teacher, Mrs. Shadow, who then created a signup genius that she sent out to the parents to gather all of the ingredients and supplies needed for the cookie bake.
In E L I classes, we wrote personal letters to the soldiers and colored them and handed them out to the packages so they would be shipped along with the cookies.
And and as they mentioned, we can't do this without our amazing community. And hundred and fifteen batches of cookies, like, I know what it's like to bake some Christmas cookies at home. You're baking a hundred and fifteen batches, you need a lot of stuff. And our community every year comes through with with flying colors. We usually have extra ingredients that we donate to, I believe it's the Honeybrook Food Bank that we take our extra ingredients to. So not just the donation of the ingredients, the parents that we need, we need an army of people. Mrs. Yenser was there this year, this year, and she had students coming to her in pairs to to work, and she got to experience the fun of that, and I know Mrs. Bolt has been there over the years and some others as well. But the biggest thing that several years ago, one of the things I I said to the math team was we send a lot of boxes to this organization and it costs a lot of money to ship a box overseas. So we talked about what could we do? And we made it very simple, we we just put it out to our parents that we'd love to have donation, monetary donations help cover the cost of shipping boxes. And parents are always asked for money, we get that. So I said, not so much asking you as parents for money, I'm asking you to talk to maybe local businesses, employers, because for for a lot of employers, that's an easy, an easy check to write, fifty bucks, a hundred bucks. We ended up well over a thousand dollars this year, which will not only cover the cost of shipping the boxes, but then the rest of that goes to benefit the outreach programs that Keystone Military Families has. And again, you know, they're super appreciative of of the support and help that we give there as well. Right? Now, government shutdowns. Never thought government shutdown would impact the cookie bake. We didn't know until the morning of the cookie bake that the government shutdown impacted us. We had our students sitting in the classrooms waiting for our National Guard members to come and speak. They've been coming for years, and they are amazing. And we were telling the kids in the days leading up, like, the kids think, oh, I gotta listen to somebody talk, and for the most part, for the kids, like, it's their favorite part of the event. And we're waiting, and we're waiting, and they didn't come. And apparently, they sent an email to the wrong email address. And we didn't know they weren't coming. So after a phone call and learning that they weren't coming, we quickly shifted gears and had to figure something else out in the classroom. But I will say, they were really apologetic of the of the error. I I think it was not their decision to not be able to come. I think they were told, you're not allowed to do this, which again, is what it is. We won't talk politics, but it is something that they 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 come to us every year. A lot of times, it's some of the same guys that request to come back to speak to our kids. And you'll come into the classroom, and there's kids doing push-ups and sit-ups and all the kind of the the P T things that that they've learned. So we actually had Mr. Lertz this year, if you know Mr. Lertz, he he got involved in a plank contest against some students, he lost, by the way. But our our teachers did an amazing job covering for that because it was not planned. We had an art station this year. I happen to have an art student in my house, who is a junior at Kutztown University, who didn't have classes on Fridays. So my daughter came and she ran our art station for us. And I said, if you can handle a rotation of two hundred and some seventh graders, you are well on your way to becoming a teacher. And she did a great job with that. And what we did this year, a little bit different, we used to make murals, and the murals were amazing. But one of the teachers said, well, why don't we make something we can put in the boxes? So the kids made some patriotic little cards that they colored. And then we put them in the boxes, just again, something, little little feel of home to go along with the handwritten letters and the, of course, the cookies. And back to the cookies.
So the actual baking of the cookies was very fun. We split up into partners, like he said, with help, the help of one or two volunteers. And we carefully followed the recipes and.
Mostly carefully.
Yeah. And then, once all the cookies were mixed and ready, we scooped them out and put them onto trays. And then we handed them over to the adults to put them into the oven and bake them and pull them off.
Anything about that? Did you enjoy it?
Yeah.
Yeah, two bakers at home?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bakery business, actually.
Ooh, that's amazing.
Out of our house.
That's amazing. That's amazing. I'm sorry, you're not in my class. But I will accept bakers.
The only real, like, mess-up we made was, some of them didn't have, like, the baking soda.
Yeah. And you know what's funny? You know the cookies we give to the kids at the end? It's all the rejects we want sent. And they still taste okay, they all look so good. The other thing we do to raise some money is we sell cookie coupons to the fifth, sixth, and eighth graders. We raised, I think, over four hundred dollars doing that this year. And then we have a teacher and some students in our life skills program that go around and deliver the cookies. And that's always kind of a a cool thing, because the fifth and sixth graders, all they know is, oh, I get a cookie, and then they get to seventh grade, and they get to see what that's all about.
So we do have a lot of volunteers. An event that big doesn't happen without volunteers and at every station helping make sure directions are followed and recipes are followed, and we get as many deliverable cookies as we possibly can. It's great to have parents, parents come in, great to see some of the retired teachers come back that are connected to the event and still want to be part of it. And also five volunteers, family members, the staff members that want to come in, be a part of it, help out. And even some former staff members that have moved on, take the day off and and come back and help. It really is a community event that people are attached to and really want to be a part of. There are some pictures, you can see some product there, some kids making the making the cookies, and then like Mr. Walczynski talked about, the art, the cards to go in the boxes as well. And then, as Mr. Walczynski talked about, those are kind of the results of this year's cookie bake. Again, everybody had a great time. If you're in that cafeteria, it's hard not to just enjoy it and smile and just have a good time.
We we did have one person down there who spent some time as a quality control expert.
Yeah. Master Cash Shipper, still good. Now, we do have a slideshow, the first, the cookie bake did take place on Halloween. So the first minute is is some Halloween costumes, but then the rest is a cookie bake.
I should say, we give a big thank you to our custodial staff, because if you've ever seen your kids cook at home, they do the same thing at school, and it was not the cleanest floor that I've ever seen when we were done, so thank you for that. Any questions?
So is it, is the goal to grow it? You want to hit more more cookies? Like, what's, is there, is there a goal for this, or are you just like raising money operation one?
If you can get me more kids in seventh grade each year. So the the goal isn't necessarily the number of cookies, although it was really cool, we were we were raising every year, we were like, next year, we're going to do better. It's it's the the money that we're raising for the outreach and the number of packages, care packs that we can send, because twenty-seven different groups of people received a care package from Twin Valley Middle School. And some of them will never have a clue who we are or where we are. But they know that somebody out there cares about what they're doing, and it's thankful and appreciative.
Does it also include science in part of the curriculum, like, then you won't forget the baking soda?
I mean, we walk around yelling, please don't forget the baking soda. I don't know if I put a lot of science into it.
Just thinking about the science side of the curriculum.
Yeah. And you can pretty much tell the groups that are probably going to forget the baking soda. Girls. It's to be the groups of boys. We did blame a lot on the two dads that were there this year. They said, this was yours, this is your fault. The one guy thought it was funny, they're kidding, think it was that funny. He might not be back.
It's a phenomenal event. It's a, from the students to the parents, it was great seeing Mrs. Patterson come back. It's just, it's really an awesome community event.
Can't wait till the retiree coming back. About eight more years, eight more cookie bakes.
Thank you for all you do, and Mrs. Sheehan, and Mr. Barber, and everybody else, it's just incredible.
I know, I'll say as a parent, for many years, it was my favorite event. It's amazing.
Yeah, it's.
I'm glad we're still doing it.
When we started, every year, we're like, why are we doing this? And then the day comes and we're like, okay, that's why.
I'll say to Ethan and to Grayson, is it? So I'm a veteran, I know Allison's a veteran. And Colleen, Mrs. Yenser is a veteran family, her whole family's full of veterans. There is nothing better than me than getting a care package. Nothing. It's the best thing in the world. I I was in Iraq during the holidays, so it's really special what you guys are doing.
And as Mr. Barber said, we really appreciate having that half-day to be able to do it. I know, over the years, there's been a lot of conversations about half-days. I can tell you, this is the best half-day of the year at the middle school, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Good to see you.
See you, guys.
Thank you.
Dr. Clements is up next, you probably have another PowerPoint.
I believe we do, and I.
I'm not going to move.
You're not going to hear much from me. We're joined by our two student council school board reps, who I believe are cookie bake veterans. You guys are. So they're going to share with with you the the first quarter recap.
Okay, so as he said, we're with the student council. I'm Maggie, I'm the senior board rep, I was here last year as a junior board rep.
And I'm Catherine, and I'm the junior board rep. It was my first year.
So we're just going to be, like, going over the clubs and different, like, sports and activities we have here, and like, what they want us to know that we've done in the first quarter.
To start off, for our student council, we had our Homecoming Spirit Week. The theme was Hoco Island, which is kind of like a flame, like, in Love Island show, but like, for high school. And we had a bunch of spirit days and the prizes that we handed out to the winners. Our hall decorating turned out amazing, each of the the grades had a hallway assigned to them, where like, it was like different places. Like, for us juniors, it was, I believe, it was London. So we had, like, the whole hallway decorated with, like, we had double-decker buses and all that kind of stuff that we did win. For the actual dance, we sold around like six hundred tickets, which was really great. The theme was neon and like a kind of Hawaiian, which like, was with our decorations. And then the king and queen were Damien Robinson, Robinson and Grace Kelly. And then, following that for Halloween week, we had activities and prizes similar to that each day, where like, there was different, like, challenges and stuff where you could win fun prizes. And then on the last day, a costume contest was put out on Instagram with a prize for the winner.
So just personally, us, student council, we went to the Pennsylvania Association Student Council State Conference this week, or last weekend. It's out past Pittsburgh, hosted at the school. And it's a bunch of guest speakers and workshops where we get to learn new leadership and just do a lot of cool stuff. It is really cool, and we went with our region, so we went with Whitehall and like two other schools on a charter bus. And our representative for region I is Sloan Wolf, and our director is Ms. McRobbie. And it's just such a cool opportunity.
And then, this is a little more. About, you can read the screen, there's kind of a lot on it, but so for this year, we earned the Keystone Council Award for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, so it's this past school year. And then one of our key takeaways from the event, there was a guest speaker, Scott Bakovich, was the importance of good communication skills in like our group and leadership settings, and the importance of wanting, instead of always, like, getting from our our school community, it was to first give and to be able to, like, receive. Like, a lot of clubs, it's asking for money, asking for donating, for donations. But the kind of highlight of this weekend was focusing on giving to the school community before you ask to get. And then there was also some new ideas proposed, like a question box for the website, for our website, for new ideas, or anyone who needs assistance. And then an idea for elementary students to make motivational posters for high school testing weeks. And there was also, like, Wish Week, and students ask for, like, wishes, and StuCo grants them, like, kind of the same idea for the question box.
Okay, so. So for the Yo Club, they have been doing their donations with the food, donations with. So, for the Yo Club, they have been doing their donations with the food, uh, donations with through the food pantry. They go to the Honeyberg Food Pantry like once a week, and they help package, and then they help give away on the donation nights, like twice a month. They also volunteer at FFA's, um, trunk or treat, so a bunch of clubs got together, and they gave out like candy and stuff to kids who wanted to like do the trunk or treat. It's gotten really popular now. And then they also go to the retirement homes and help out there, too. So, Senior Class Sunrise, um, it was a really big success. This, this was like the first time in like eight years that we actually could see the sunrise, and like it wasn't all cloudy. So, that was really nice. We had shady maple donuts, and it was just a really nice event. It went really good this year.
Um, so for the Tum Valley Labyrinth, it is a magazine club, and this year they had, they held a poetry contest on October 20th. Uh, oh, oh, sorry, poems were submitted by students after two rounds of voting, the winners were announced. And third place was Crashing by Brandon McEwan, second place was White Picket Fence Dreams by Charlotte Morrison, and first place was Lightning Doesn't Ask by Olivia Mandy. And Olivia will get a feature page in the next Tum Valley Labyrinth paper, and a don't pray for comments.
Okay, so Book Club, Book Club has, Book Club celebrated Pride and Prejudice for its 250th birthday. They just do, I think they do a book a month, and then they get together and they talk about it and read it together. And they focused on promoting and encouraging reading for the younger grades, so they've worked with elementary schools and middle schools to promote reading in the younger levels.
And for NHS, uh, me and Maggie are both in it, so 100, uh, like this past month, we made 150 cards for the Reading Hospital Orthopedic. And this year, this is kind of a big deal, we're on track to surpass 17, 7, around like 1700 service hours, which is like equivalent to like 74, like straight days, and we're really looking forward to beat that, beat this, and move on for the rest of the year. And then for Theater Arts Club, this year they had their annual popcorn fundraiser. This is like one of the biggest pop, uh, fundraisers they do throughout the year. They also had a dining duty at Scriptiveville in September. They had multiple fall workshops that are like, kind of like these different things where they're like members have to like learn about like theater arts and like improve on their stuff. And then they purchased, they also participated in FFA's trunk or treat in October. And then they had a field trip to see a course line at Dutch Apple, Dutch Apple Theater.
So TSA, which I am in, if you remember our presentation last year, we have just started, we've had a couple meetings, and we are signing up for events, and we are running a Christmas ornament fundraiser and a chip-for-like gift card fundraiser to raise money for states, because it can be expensive, so we like to raise money so that it is more accessible for all students that want to go.
Uh, Concert Choir, uh, they started their, uh, year with, uh, a few members of their leadership team representing the high school choir program at the enrollment fair. And then they did some, even working hard on their auditions at the PMEA District 10 Chorus and MEBC Senior Chorus audition.
FFA, here's just some pictures from their recent events and community outreach. They've done some with Tell High, they've done some with younger students, and as you can see, they just like to bring the animals. It brings a lot of joy to people who sometimes need a little bit more joy in their life to see these animals and get to interact with students, too.
Uh, for German Club in September, they participated in the Gummy Bear Olympics, which involved different challenges of building and creation, as well as facts from the German company Herbo and their traditional gummy bears. And then they also, in October, took, took part in learning about Oktoberfest and the traditional like celebrations and festivities. And then Damien Robinson was elected as Homecoming Representative for the club in one.
So, this is Robinson Elementary Center High School Heroes. It's a program where high schoolers go down and like help out with classes and teach lessons to the elementary students. So, they went down for their like walk, and they helped to direct students and walk with them, and just really like kind of mentor them as like older students. So, that is all.
And, uh, yeah, and also I know for, uh, uh, TVEC High School Heroes, which I'm in, is, I think it's upcoming Friday.
So, if you guys have any questions, we would love to answer them. That's.
How do we order ornaments?
Oh, well, we'll have it posted up on our Instagram, or you can just email Mr. Joy. We'll make sure it's out and easy, easily accessible.
We'll, we'll put that in the board letter, too, if we can share it with the board members then.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for listening.
We have no new business, so we'll move on to the report of the committees. We went through this, this would be the voting section. So, for Instruction and Technology Committee, uh, there was a recommendation to approve the minutes of the October 13th meeting. Do we need to take action on that? Since we approved the, uh, the minutes, so they were included in the minutes of October 13th? Can we, is everyone okay when we take A through C together?
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll take A, B, and C, A is minutes. We use an agreement with Global Data Consultants of Tamersburg for Information Technology Support Services. Item C is, uh, to approve a four-year agreement with BCIU for, uh.
Was going with that, that in the same one from last week?
GDC.
It was initial class, we can stop that.
Sorry, I'll tell somebody else, okay, we're good with that. And the agreement with BCIU for VMware licenses beginning 2025 through, um, 28, 29. So, we're gonna take them all together and ask for motion and a second?
Second Phillips.
Are there any questions on any of the three items being presented for vote? I'll take it, so, uh, ask for roll call, please.
John Burry?
Yes.
Nick DeJonge?
Yes.
Trevor Glass?
Yes.
Karen McEwen?
Yes.
Kyle Moore?
Yes.
Jay Oliver?
Yes.
Tracy Phillips?
Yes.
Kelly Anderson?
Yes.
Next is the Finance Committee items. Uh, we have two items. A is, A is the minutes for October 13th. B is, uh, there's a recommendation to approve the agreement with OMNI and TSA GC, Compliance Services, to bill expenses directly to our 403B investment providers, um, which comes at no cost to the country. So, we're okay taking both of those together. I ask for a motion and a second.
Good move, Burry. Second class.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
John Burry?
Yes.
Nick DeJonge?
Yes.
Trevor Glass?
Yes.
Karen McEwen?
Yes.
Kyle Moore?
Yes.
Jay Oliver?
Yes.
Tracy Phillips?
Yes.
Yes.
Allison Bolt?
Yeah.
For the Govern Committee, we also have three items. And may, well, I guess we take them all three together? Okay with that? Item A, the action through Board Policy 805-2, which is school security, this is a second reading. And B is to approve policies 55, 355, 455, 555, child abuse, uh, this is a first reading. And then Board Policy, I would see is to approve Board Policy 716, Integrated Pest Management, um, for a first reading. I will ask for motion and a second.
So, Trace.
Not Tracey and Allison, in that order. Questions or comments?
I just want to make sure everybody got the new wording for the child abuse that we included in.
I will see that again. There's nothing else? Roll call, please.
Nick DeJonge?
Yes.
Trevor Glass?
Yes.
Karen McEwen?
Yes.
Kyle Moore?
Yes.
Jay Oliver?
Yes.
Tracy Phillips?
Yes.
Kelly Anderson?
Yes.
Allison Bolt?
Yes.
John Burry?
Yes.
For the Treasury Report, do we want to do the same thing, go through one through four altogether? Um, are you okay with that? Is there anything you want to?
I got that question.
Well, is anyone else okay with that? Okay, so the Operational Report, which is the general fund and capital reserve, number two is Transfers for October. Number three is Treasuries Report, which includes Expenditure Report, Revenue Report, Capital, No-Capior Report this month. Uh, and Debt Service Summary. And then four is Other, which includes the Activity Reports or Account Report. Um, as for motion, a second, please.
Sorry, who was first?
Jay, Jay Allison. There, uh, any questions on any items being presented in the Treasury Report? I'm not hearing any, so, uh, I'm gonna ask for a roll call, please.
Trevor Glass?
Yes.
Karen McEwen?
Yes.
Kyle Moore?
Yes.
Jay Oliver?
Yes.
Tracy Phillips?
Yes.
Kelly Anderson?
Yes.
Allison Bolt?
Yes.
John Burry?
Yes.
Nick DeJonge?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Personnel. We have no resignations or terminations. So, move to, uh, C, which is Nominations. We'll take Professional, 1A through C. Um, if that's okay with everyone? Good move, Burry.
Second, DeJonge.
We have motion, a second, to approve the Professional nominations for A, B, and C.
Can I ask a student question? What's the difference between a guest teacher and a substitute teacher?
Substitute teachers to be approved as this certificated. Guest teacher is someone with a bachelor's or a college, that does a guest teacher training.
Okay, that makes sense.
Well, if you're sure you do have substitution.
It doesn't matter what bachelor's degree is in, just to let you know that if you ever want to substitute, that would catch those appointments. We're gonna be through BCIU.
Do you have to start a certification process?
Yep. You go to BCIU, it's a training program, you go to BCIU, it's a day. It's a day, and you pass all your programs, and then.
Sure, now I'm gonna do it.
It's internal.
I don't know, I, I just didn't know that, I didn't know that.
Okay, anything else? Roll call, please.
Karen McEwen?
Yes.
Kyle Moore?
Yes.
Jay Oliver?
Yes.
Tracy Phillips?
Yes.
Kelly Anderson?
Yes.
Allison Bolt?
Yes.
John Burry?
Yes.
Nick DeJonge?
Yes.
Trevor Glass?
Yes. I should have said no.
For Support Staff, we're gonna take A separately, B separately, and if there's no objections, we'll take B through H. So, I, I am, we'll take 2A. First, we need a motion, a second, 3A. Mine says 2A.
I think it's a four match. Yeah. There's no one.
There's no one, yes, it is a four nine.
Correct, wait a minute.
Okay, sorry, Gary.
It's right there.
Yeah. Oh, it is two.
One, one is professional.
Mine's correct, yours is wrong. Who's that? I know. So, we got the other correct one. I'm, I'll make the motion to, uh, for the Volunteer Services, Jay Oliver. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Kyle Moore?
Yes.
Jay Oliver?
And Stane.
Tracy Phillips?
Yes.
Kelly Anderson?
Yes.
Allison Bolt?
Yes.
John Burry?
Yes.
Nick DeJonge?
Yes.
Trevor Glass?
Yes.
Karen McEwen?
Yes.
Motion, Harris.
Item B, the following has 2025, 2026, 2025, non-athletic supplemental positions that employees. So, move, Burry.
Second, Paul.
Thank you. What I missed was, yeah, that's, sorry. Any questions on?
So.
Item B.
That's being split to four people?
And it has been.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Jay Oliver?
Yes.
Tracy Phillips?
Yes.
Kelly Anderson?
Yes.
Allison Bolt?
Yes.
John Burry?
Yes.
Nick DeJonge?
Yes.
Trevor Glass?
Yes.
Karen McEwen?
Yes.
Kyle Moore?
Yes.
Motion, Harris.
Okay, go to C, 25, 26, Winter Athletics Supplemental Positions and Employees. Your motion, a second. So, move.
Second, Oliver.
Okay, we have motion, a second, and any questions?
What's the difference between TBD and BIG?
Yeah. Whether or not we, based on numbers, whether or not we need a coach for that position. Um, do we have a plan for those, since? We do have a plan, that we're working, that they're gonna be accepted.
Any other questions? Call.
Tracy Phillips?
Yes.
Kelly Anderson?
Yes.
Allison Bolt?
Yes.
John Burry?
Yes.
Nick DeJonge?
Yes.
Trevor Glass?
Yes.
Karen McEwen?
Stane.
Kyle Moore?
Yes.
Jay Oliver?
Yes.
Motion, Harris.
We will move on to items D through H, if everyone's okay with that, and ask for a motion, a second. So, move, Burry.
Second, Phillips.
Thank you. Questions on any of the five positions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Kelly Anderson?
Yes.
Allison Bolt?
Yes.
John Burry?
Yes.
Nick DeJonge?
Yes.
Trevor Glass?
Yes.
Karen McEwen?
Yes.
Kyle Moore?
Yes.
Jay Oliver?
Yes.
Tracy Phillips?
Yes.
We'll move to Change of Status, and again, if there's no objection, I guess that we take A through D together. That's okay. We ask for a motion, a second.
What did you said? Should be A through C. And then, and then the two.
Uh, A are messing with you tonight, I don't take care of it. I have C, Change of Status, A, Taylor Richards, B, Sarah Weaver, C, Elizabeth Siegfried, and D, Shelby Mills.
Shelby's under Support Staff for us.
Oh, mine is not.
So.
So, how do we want to do this? Do we wanna, what, what was, what were the minutes? What was the agenda that was advertised? Let's go with that.
It should be C, 1, A through C. And then if you want to do Support Staff, 2A, all under Change of Status.
C, 1.
A through C.
A through C.
Which is Professional, and then Support Staff, and.
Okay, so, motion, there was a motion. Okay, so, motion, there was a motion, there wasn't a motion. We need a motion for C, 1A through C, which is professional. And then, support staff will be 2A. Let's take them separate, let's take professional, 1A through C, need a motion and a second.
Second.
Are there any questions? Other than my questions? Not hearing any, so roll call please.
Allison Ball.
Yes.
John Burry.
Yes.
Nick DeJonge.
Yes.
Trevor Glass.
Yes.
Karen McEwen.
Yes.
Kyle Moore.
Yes.
Jay Oliver.
Yes.
Tracy Phillips.
Yes.
Colleen Henson.
Yes.
Push your faces.
And we'll take change of status, C, 2A, support staff. You have motion and a second.
So move Phillips.
Second. Pull here.
So motion, a second, any questions on 2A? Hearing none, roll call?
John Burry.
Yes.
Nick DeJonge.
Yes.
Trevor Glass.
Yes.
Karen McEwen.
Yes.
Kyle Moore.
Yes.
Jay Oliver.
Yes.
Tracy Phillips.
Yes.
Colleen Henson.
Yes.
Allison Ball.
Yes.
Push your faces.
Is there a DA?
Yes.
So our last action item would be, I know DA under change of status. It's not change of status, it's other. Now I'll read this one, is the following temporary professional employee is recognized in the minutes of the board meeting as having attained professional employee status, including the benefit of tenure and issuance of regular, of a regular contract of employment. And it's Haley Campbell. Then move Bertie. You have a motion and a second, to pre-tenure, or. Questions or comments, we'll do a roll call.
Nick DeJonge.
Yes.
Trevor Glass.
Yes.
Karen McEwen.
Yes.
Kyle Moore.
Yes.
Jay Oliver.
Yes.
Tracy Phillips.
Yes.
Colleen Henson.
Yes.
Allison Ball.
Yes.
John Burry.
Yes.
Push your faces.
Thank you. We have no other business, so we'll move on to other reports. John, can we have your BCTC report?
Yes, I do. We had, we had a great opportunity, the earliest meeting was October 22nd, and we got to visit Service Occupations, and they run a coffee shop there, which is really nice, that they had some of the students run it, so it's a student-run coffee shop. It's opened numerous times throughout the day, where other students and staff come in and get their, their fancy coffee, and it's just regular coffee, like I drink, but they, they, they were making a lot of different fancy coffees, if someone had that for liking, and they're at a very good price, I forget the price schedule, so there's a very good price there. During our regular meeting, we, we passed a couple of different policies, we did quite a few approvals for different schools USAs and some other competitions for the students to attend this coming year. We also did some reviews of the CDL tuition. The CDL tuition is going to be changing some a little bit there, it's actually still a very good price, and actually, it's, there's a reduction for students also, we're finding that certain students, depending upon the occupier, whatever their going towards as their course, that sometimes it's nice to have a CDL on top of it, just say even if it's an electrician, if they have to run a certain bucket truck, or tow something with a backup or so forth, so it is, it, it can help with some other courses, so we're trying to just expand that out a little bit more to make the students more marketable, and have, have more, you know, have more tools for them to work with there. So it's a very, a very neat thing at this time. Our next meeting is actually just coming up really soon here, on December 11th, and that's pretty much all I have at this time.
Is that coffee shop completely public?
I don't know about that.
I know.
If you're up there, you want to, you want to.
So is the lunch, was it, is lunch?
Lunch, lunch and, lunch and the cosmetology, they have some different schedules, unfortunately, I don't know the schedules, Allison.
Are we, oh, we got that?
I can't, let me reach out.
I gotta take the paper recycling up there one of these mornings, so, since we no longer have any paper retrievers.
So you, you want coffee, lunch, and your hair done?
Yeah, that works.
I will reach out on that.
And, and so are they actually looking to do, so it would be dual certification with the CDL?
No.
Is that, or is it?
Not, not really, it's.
Just some means on it?
The CDL is, is not part of the regular course studies there, it's a, like an evening studies class there.
Right.
But they're just finding out that, you know, they're, they're really digging into what it does help in certain courses for them to get it, like for heavy equipment mechanic or an operator, to be able to drive the truck on the road to deliver the equipment, so they're just, the CDL's very handy in a lot of trades to have.
Oh, yes. I don't want to.
You want to do that when you're.
That's enough.
Yeah, it's, 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 if you're more thought about it, it's very handy now, CDL for people.
Thanks, John. Tracy, do you want to?
Well, sure, the only thing I have to talk about regarding the ed foundation is the gala that happened this past Saturday, but I'm actually going to defer to anybody here, because I wasn't able to make it to the wedding, but I, I heard it was fantastic, so anybody who wants to share, I'm, I'm open for people to share.
I think it was 150 that attended, last minute, we didn't have our emcee, Charles, yeah, he, he gets canceled because of.
That's why you had a baby?
Just had a little baby a few days before, so Amanda probably filled in the role. I, I don't, I don't know what, I don't know how well it did, that I, I didn't hear the tolls yet, but it's a great venue at, at the Redner Center. I, I think the food was pretty good, it was a little different from last year, since he might shank it and said, yes. So I think it went well, at least from my viewpoint.
Well, there's, and probably by, maybe December, but definitely January, I'll have the numbers to be able to report back. But thank you to everybody who went, thank you for supporting.
Just because the funding need was the teacher grants, so that was really, that was really.
Yeah, and Kyle got the mic and.
Yeah.
Added a little bit of additional money to the town.
Yeah, it started with six, seven, and had everybody.
Were you being, you, you were backup emcee then?
Well, if Charles wasn't there, and Amanda came in, and she said, I'm not doing good, I need help, I was like, well, I don't know what I can do, I'll cry.
Kyle was a conker, at least.
Yeah, and it got, got a, got some extra dollars. So, go to the IU report, our meeting is, is this Thursday, we had our leadership meeting today, the budget was approved, the state budget was approved, so that's good for the IU, they, they really depend on state dollars to run the, the early intervention programs. This Thursday, we'll be approving the contracts for some renovations that are going to be done at the main, kind of the main building, bringing students back into that building, spend some time and look at inefficiencies, and move out of the, the front building, which is almost right across from the Redner Center, where we had the, the event on Saturday. It sounds like those bids came in under budget, it is, it is winter time work, so it's inside, so it's sometimes do a little better if you got inside work in winter time. So I have, I have a little bit more on, on that at our next meeting, if, or we'll get the updates, it'll be in what we receive after this Thursday's meeting. So, no comments or questions? We'll move to our solicitor, do you have anything for us, Leah?
I have no report, thank you.
So move to Mr. Sciboria for the super tense report.
Thank you. So good news, I do, you have a report, right?
I have a report.
Just give us an update on the PSBA, sorry, I interrupted. I forgot it if I didn't.
Prepared.
Are you, just.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. So just a few items, as you just heard, the good news, the budget did fast, you know, late last week, we were getting those announcements, but we, Tracy's putting together kind of a one-page summary to show, you know, what we budgeted versus what we're getting. It's a little tricky, because there's one or two parts that, that aren't as easy to calculate, there's some changes to the cyber charter payments, and we're trying to make sure we have it accurate, so we'll have that information, but it is favorable, so we'll be able to report out how we did versus what we budgeted. Veterans Day was able to attend all three, you know, Allison and Kyle were part of the group at Robinson that were honored, and got to defend, from Valley and Honeybrook as well, spoke with many of the veterans, and just very, very grateful, you know, some have a, a child or a grandchild in the district, others have been coming every year, the children and grandchildren are no longer on, and they, they still come back, so, really great events at all three schools, we thank our principals, our parent volunteers, our staff for putting it together at each of our schools. Just a reminder again, Friday and Saturday, 7 o'clock PM, in our high school auditorium is the Curious Savage, so if you're available to come to the show, and I know it's gotten a lot of great coverage, but Friday was a tremendous win by our football team, which has earned our team the right to play for the district championship this Friday, that's November 21st, 7 o'clock PM, and that's at Elko High School, we wish our team the best of luck.
Elko, Lebanon.
Where, where time is that?
Myers.
7 o'clock PM. Any questions?
Is there going to be a live stream link for that? Yeah.
Huddle?
No, no, because huddle's always at home.
Yeah, that's right.
We, we, we usually do it, W, the E is.
Oh, that's right, like, oh, W, you're just doing the radio.
Burke County.
They're filming it and, and announcing it.
So if you go to.
There is a live stream too.
So.
They, they did, they did the live.
Out of town.
And I'm like, oh, man.
Yeah, they, we're the only Burke County school.
Yeah.
So definitely, they'll definitely be covered.
So they're going to have commentators and everything?
Yes.
Sweet.
Covered.
You just go to WU, hit the link.
Yeah, it's Bob McCool, who does best, you know, he does basketball and everything. And Allison was at PSBA this past weekend, or weekend before?
Yeah, I was going to say, so it's, it's always a really amazing program to go and see, to get to go to the, the different sessions, but the kids, performances by the kids, and I love to see our kids apply to go up there and be part of one of these sessions, where they send in a, a video ahead of time to get selected, but there are a lot of really great performances.
What, what do they do?
So there was, there was a middle school jazz band, there were.
Different.
Yeah, and they're doing different times during the conference, and the conference has different breakout sessions, I will put that in the letter, but I mean.
Thank you for taking the time to represent the district.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there any more discussion?
Can I just comment just on one thing here, on, on BCTC's webpage, they have the schedules there for the restaurant and for the salon, the salon also has pricing there, I do not see anything for air extensions.
Yes.
There's other stuff there that makes suit other people, and, and there's that thing on there for appointments also. So they're both on there, I don't know about the coffee, but the, the others are on there, the salon, and also on the, the lunch, you can also get meal packages to go there, it's not every day of the week, there's a schedule there, so please check it out.
Anything else?
So I believe it's American education week, so many thank you to our teachers, our support staff, and our administration, for all they do for our kids in the community, and then my second question is, we had talked about having a board retreat in January, my weekends are filling up, and I was wondering if we could start talking about it.
Send the, everybody send dates you're available, after holidays and the graduate.
During the week or weeks?
Whichever works.
It would.
Just board.
That's what I would prefer, but I don't.
Yeah, be just, just board.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'll send something out to everybody, how about that?
That'd be great, thank you.
Motion to adjourn? Move Bertie.
Second.
All favor, adjournment, say aye. Sorry, guys.